We have a full house here this evening. We have a number of awards that we're going to do early on, so bear with us. The first this evening is reports of city officers and comments by mayor. The number one is a certificate of recognition for the Lake Forest High School girls hockey team. And I'd like to read some interesting facts here because this is quite an accomplishment for the girls.
Girls, why don't you come in?
Come on up and be seen. Why don't you come on up here?
You're on TV, girls.
That might not be a good thing to say. Okay, I'm going to read some highlights from the season. This year, the Lake Forest High School girls hockey team finished the season with a 22, 8, and 2 record and won the Black Hawk Cup state championship at the United Center over Loyola Academy 4 to 1. It is the first Black Hawk Cup championship for the girls program and the first for Lake Forest High School in 30 years. The team was led by captain, the only senior goaltender, Hannah Redden, who was goaltender of the year in the state. The team had five all-state representatives: Hannah Redden, Jessica Gold, Madison Fowzer, Haley Conroy, and Kelsey Patton. During the playoffs, four members were named to the all-tournament team: Hannah Redden, Haley Conroy, Lucy Baron, and Marie Sukup. Also in the playoffs, sophomore Bridget Roach had four goals and two assists and was named player of the game in the state. In route to the state championship, Lake Forest defeated a difficult number six seeded Oak Park River Forest 2 and 0, and then the number two seeded Nutria 4 to 3. It was the second year in a row that Lake Forest defeated Nutria in the state semifinals. Congratulations to all the girls here this evening and to coach Ryan Anderson. Please give him a big round of applause.
Coach?
Coach? big group. We're going to be here for awards, and that's the presentation of the mayor's award for Young Artists Enrichment Program. And as I think I said last year, and I'll say it again, but this is an area that I'm always amazed at because I personally have absolutely no artistic talent or ability. I have failed the paint-by-numbers as a kid, and I don't think I could do it again today. But we have a lot of very talented young artists in our community, and Vicki Marasco, if you would want to come up to the podium here, I think you're going to read the names. I'll be happy to hand them out, and if you'd give a little recognition to each one of them.
Good evening. I'm Vicki Marasco, and I'm with the Deerpath Art League, representing our Young Artists Enrichment Program. And every March, which is National Youth Art Month, we reserve our art gallery exclusively for the display of young artists' work. This year, we exhibited over 300 pieces of artwork by students from 12 schools, ranging in grades kindergarten through college. We hosted an opening reception for the artists, giving them a taste of what a professional artist may experience, and it was a very special evening. Most of the schools are local, with the exception of the Art Institute and three schools from North Chicago, where we have been fortunate enough to have built a collaboration with North Chicago Community Partners and the Boys and Girls Club of Lake County to bring art instruction to students in a wonderful after-school program where they don't have any art in their regular curriculum during school hours. Mayor Cowie has provided his generous support for the second year by inviting the selected mayor's emerging art award winners, run from each of the schools, to your city council meeting and creating a special occasion for the students by presenting the awards himself. We are very grateful to the mayor and the city of Lake Forest for celebrating the visual talents of the young people in our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vicki, and thank you for all your hard work. Do we have the awards?
Yep. Should I just call the names of the students and have them come up one by one?
Do you want them up here again? Bob, come on up.
Sure. There's enough room. Is there enough room up here, Vicki?
We should have about eight or 10 here tonight. All the students who are here, do you want to come on up, and then I'll call your names once you're up here? And call them up at the same time. Okay, first of all, we have Scott Knotts from Cherokee Elementary. Then we have Anna Sophie Plombeck from Everett Elementary School. We have Sherazada Notch from Sheridan Elementary School. We have Naraya Alcantara from Forestall School in North Chicago. We have Nicholas Dominguez from A.J. Katzenmeyer School in North Chicago. We have U.N.G. C. from Lake Forest Academy. We have Heather Hanson from Lake Forest College. And we have Lou Wren from Woodlands Academy. Oh, okay. Can I just announce the three that weren't able to make it with us tonight? We have Nicole Valenzuela from Neil Math and Science Academy. I'm sorry she's not here. I thought she was going to make it. Colin Cycle from Lake Forest High School, supposed to be here, and Ellie MacArthur from the School of the Art Institute of Chicago. So let's give them around.
I'll tell you what, kids slide back just a little so that you don't hide the people behind you. They want to get their picture taken. There you go.
Again, thank you, Vicki, for all your hard work. For putting the program together. Our next item on the agenda this evening is going to be the Lake Forest High School Foundation report on the 75th anniversary. It will be presented by the Lake Forest High School Foundation President Jennifer Graham and Superintendent Dr. Harry Griffith. And Harry, you're not dressed up in topcoat and tails and white gloves this evening, so we don't recognize you this time.
No, I'm not. Thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. Wow, that was really wonderful. Thank you for doing that. The hockey team, girls hockey team, that represents the third state championship this year. Our girls tennis team, in the fall, were state champions, and also our boys golf team. So that's pretty exciting to be the third team.
You've got to make sure we get them over here.
Yeah, that's right. We certainly could do more of that.
We could use a few lessons for the boys golf team.
I need more lessons on YouTube.
They might have been afraid we'd rub off on them. They must stay away.
Just a quick announcement, mayor. Lake Forest High School this year is celebrating its 75th anniversary, just like the city is celebrating its 150th anniversary. So this is a special time for Lake Forest High School, and we are going to have a series of activities over the next six months, starting with the community open house on May 1st. We'd like to invite each of you or anyone else in our community to come up to Lake Forest High School. It will be on a Sunday. And we have student volunteers who are going to give a tour, tours throughout the school to show what the contemporary high school is about, the kind of coursework and activities of Lake Forest High School. In addition, there's going to be a step into the past. We're calling it echoes in the halls. Our high school students have interviewed alumni of Lake Forest High School from past decades, and each decade representing a different era of American history, and certainly at Lake Forest High School also. And so they're going to be, they've been videotaped, they're going to be running, as well as just paraphernalia from different eras of Lake Forest High School. So that's going to be pretty exciting. So that will be on May 1st at Lake Forest High School, and then there will be more announcements going on into the future also. So also, we have a special occasion for this year, a commemoration that Jennifer Graham, the president of Lake Forest High School Foundation, would like to share with you.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith, mayor, and members of the council. The foundation has been working with the high school for the last eight years, and our board decided at the beginning of the year that we wanted to join in the celebration of the 75 years. So we commissioned Mark McMahon, a local artist here in the community, to do a painting for us. And as we worked with Mr. McMahon, tried to decide what we could do to capture 75 years of high school life in one painting. And we all agreed the best idea that came forward was to capture kids and cars. So I'm proud to show you this evening the original painting. It's behind me here. It starts at the opening entrance to the driveway with a 1935 Chevy Roadster. And as you work your way around the drive at the high school, we have an automobile from each of the decades, from 1935 till 2010, and it ends here in the lower left-hand corner with a 2010 Mini Cooper. Along the way, we have kids in the various attires that commemorates the various decades. And if you look very closely at the entrance to the high school, it's Mr. Eaton in his very famous plaid jacket. So we will be giving this painting to the high school next week at the foundation's luncheon to commemorate the 75th, and it will hang as part of the high school's permanent collection after next Tuesday, when we give it to Dr. Griffith and Jay Hoffman at the luncheon. If anyone is interested in the painting, you can go to the high school's website, click on the link, go to the foundation's homepage, where you'll find an order form. We are selling prints available in four different sizes, so I would encourage everyone to look at that. And as a special note, we are very grateful to Canous Motors in Lake Bluff, who was our underwriter, for the cost of the art. Thanks very much.
Thank you. So, Harry, I take it that's going to be your Christmas card this year. Thank you for coming in this evening, Jennifer and Harry. Our next item on the agenda this evening is resolutions of appreciation for board and commission members. Last Friday evening, the city held its recognition for the boards and commission members. We did present individually to those who attended. I would like to just read for the rest of the public, though, certainly we're not at our dinner the other night, but just to give you the recognition for the folks that have volunteered, and we thank them for all their time and efforts over the years. The first member is Lloyd Culberson from the Building Review Board, Virginia Munson-McTear from the Historic Preservation Commission, Bruce Barnett from the Library Board, Kathy Pearson from the Library Board, Ellen Young, Library Board, Michael Ableman from the Plan Commission, who will also be joining us on the council shortly, Kathy Waldeck from the Plan Commission, another member who will be up here on the council soon, Mary Beth Jones, Senior Resource Commission, Kathleen Rylance, the Senior Resource Commission, Cardy Davis, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Angela DeDolph, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Daniel Jansica from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I entertain a motion for approval of these resolutions of appreciation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is the 2011 to 2012 board and commission reappointments. I am not going to read each and every one of these. We do have a number of the boards from the fire, police, building review boards, cemetery commission, construction codes commission, historic preservation commission, the legal committee, the library board, plan commission, and senior resource commission. And given that these are all reappointments, I will not go through individual names, but we do, again, thank these individuals for their volunteerism, for their dedication to the community, and we welcome them back to their newly-reappointed positions. So I do need a recommendation for approval of the 2011 to 2012 reappointments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that approval. Our next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. To stay with the theme or spirit of celebration this evening, we have three longtime city employees who will be retiring here shortly that we want to celebrate their career. The first one up there is Mr. Ken Leon. Actually, other than the gray hair, he hasn't really changed all that much in the 30 years he's been with the city. But Ken is retiring from Lake Forest after 30 years and has been involved in a number of activities in the city, starting out as a parks maintenance worker and working his way up to superintendent of public works over that period of time. Ken has been instrumental in a number of projects, whether it's the city's green team or moving into the new MS building and so forth. But I think the two that will probably stay with him as maybe his legacy to this organization really are Elway Farms. He was the first city staff employee working when we took that over and began the restoration and renovation of the historic Gentleman Farm at Elway. And then, I think more importantly, the Lake Forest Cemetery. As I told the cemetery commission the other evening, I think if there was one project that Ken probably cherished the most, loved the most, and put his most heart and passion in, it was probably the cemetery. And he's even got something on the agenda tonight regarding Lake Forest Cemetery. So he's a very special person. I see Abby Fosnot in the audience, and I understand Abby's trying to get him to move to Maine, but I hope Ken and Chris stay here. Ken Leon is here with his wife, Chris. Ken, if you could come up to the podium, I know the mayor's going to read a resolution. If you want to read the resolution, then we'll present it to him.
I am honored to read the resolution, and Ken, I've worked with you probably for, I'm trying to think about the last 10 years now, through the public works committees and different on the green team, and it's been an honor and a privilege to be able to work with you. And so I'd like to say a few nice words here for you as well. We have a resolution this evening. Whereas Kenneth R. Leon has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest since April 20th, 1981, whereas Ken Leon will honorably retire from the city on April 30th, 2011. And whereas Ken Leon served in the following positions during his dedicated career: parks maintenance worker in April 1981, promoted to foreman in August 1984, promoted to superintendent of parks, forestry, and grounds in December 1989, promoted to assistant director of public works in May 1999, and superintendent of public works in January '22. And whereas, highlights of his service include the construction of the Lake Forest Cemetery Memorial Gardens and Gate House, the addition of the Lake Forest Cemetery to the State of Illinois Register of Restored Places, served as chairman of the executive safety committee, department safety committee, city green team, and ADA committees. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Ken Leon for a public service faithfully performed, and be it resolved that the city clerk, and hereby is instructed, deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Ken Leon this 18th day of April 2011. Congratulations, Ken.
You don't want the railing to get away.
We can't let you be done by a little kid.
Chris, I'm going to get taken.
It's a video.
That's right. Don't worry, this will be on patch tomorrow. You'll see it all there.
I'd like to just say I've known Ken for all 30 of those years. He's one of the nicest and best, hard-working guys in this town. Now you have time to get that Model A running.
Okay, well, the next one that we have to celebrate here this evening is Mr. You know, it's actually surprising we hired the guy on the left, isn't it? And this probably won't surprise you that the job he was hired in 1976 was casual labor. He looks like a casual. That's right. I think everybody in Lake Forest probably knows Dan Reeves, because while he has been in public works, he's been in parks and forestry, he was in community development out at the golf course, he's touched so many people, and I think even Mrs. Falcone said at a meeting recently that this guy knows about every bug and weed and plant and tree that there is, where most of us couldn't tell the difference between a maple and an elm and a locust. But thank God that we've had Dan out there. And I have to say that, you know, the city of Lake Forest is a tree city, and a lot of that credit goes to Dan, who started early on, really making sure that we, as a community, focused on this important asset that we have in our community. So, Mr. Mayor, if you could read the resolution, please, and Dan, come on forward.
Be happy to.
You didn't know we were going to do that, did you?
And if Bob didn't tell us that was you on the left, I don't think we ever would have got so. Studly-looking young man there. Not that you're not now, but.
Looks like he started to grow his hair long again, too. He's getting ready.
I'd like to read the resolution for Dan. Whereas Daniel R. Reeves has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest since April 19th, 1976. And whereas, Dan Reeves will honorably retire from the city on April 30th, 2011. And whereas, Dan R. Reeves served in the following positions during his dedicated career: casual labor, as we noticed, in April 1976, promoted to maintenance man in September 1976, promoted to tree trimmer in March 1977, promoted to lead maintenance man in September 1980, promoted to foreman in May 1984, promoted to city forester development coordinator in February '22, and promoted to superintendent of parks and golf in July of 2007. Whereas, highlights of his service include his becoming a certified arborist. In this role, he served as liaison with local garden clubs, acted as a staff expert on ravines and bluffs, was a contributing member to the city tree ordinance, and was president of the Illinois Society of Arboriculture. He was a premier architect of the combined green industry. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Dan Reeves for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Dan Reeves this 18th day of April 2011. Congratulations, Dan.
All right, we'll get your picture, and then you can shake the rest of them.
Mayor, on the agenda was also a third longtime city employee, Rich Bailey. He is not here this evening. He was ill today. So if we want to just read his resolution into the record, and we'll be getting that to him very shortly.
I'd be happy to do so.
Actually, we do have pictures. You want to see them? All right. Karina, they do want to see the picture. Rich isn't here to defend himself, but what the heck, right? They like the first two so much. See, he didn't change all that much. Must have been working at the beach. Keeps you young.
I can see why you hired him.
The other two, eh.
I think it's suffice to say that we didn't have our hiring practices in place until after, what, 1975?
That was before Deshay and I got here, right, Deshay?
I'd like to read the resolution into the record. Whereas, Richard A. Bailey has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest since April 1975, and whereas, Richard A. Bailey will honorably retire from the city on April 30th, 2011. And whereas, Richard A. Bailey served in the following positions during his dedicated career: casual labor in April 1975 in the cemetery, promoted to maintenance man July 1975 in the cemetery, and promoted to maintenance worker 2 May 1988 in parks. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Richard A. Bailey for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Richard A. Bailey this 18th day of April 2011. And I assume you'll hand this to him, so.
Thank you very much.
I'll give it back to you, Bertie, afterwards.
Thank you.
I'd also like a approval of those three motions for these resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. One final item, I'm going to ask Susan Kelsey to come up very quickly, because starting Thursday is Earth Week for 2011, and there's a number of activities going on with the city of Lake Forest, Lake Forest Open Lands, Lake Forest College, and others. So Susan?
Thank you. The city is delighted to work with the 150 Committee and the Lake Forest College Student Government and a number of other organizations in Lake Forest on Earth Week. This was an innovation, innovative program that the college came up with. There's a number of events. I'll just highlight a few of them. All of this information is available at the 150 website. It's lF150.com. This Thursday, the Lake Forest College is hosting an environmental speaker, Mike Ableman out of California. On Friday, Gordon will be the movie Wally at 7 o'clock. Free Cracker Jacks to the first 100 people that show up. And then, on following Tuesday, at the Wildlife Discovery Center, there's some open-up tours over there. Then Friday, on April 29th, 10 o'clock in the morning, you can see Mayor Cowie with the tree ceremony at Triangle Park. Then at 7 o'clock, a second movie will be playing at the Gordon, An Inconvenient Truth by Al Gore. And then, following that, around 9 o'clock down at the beach, bring your telescopes down. We'll do astronomy night. We'll have sky maps down there. So all week long, there's T-shirts that are being offered. The Cali- So, all week long, there's T-shirts that are being offered, the college gave you a couple of T-shirts, they're selling them on the website. Speak Up is doing a medicine collection program. Lake Forest Open Lands has a number of programs going out throughout the week. And we're also doing geocaching for gardens, so it's a high-tech treasure hunt in Lake Forest. There's fifteen of these similar-type-looking caches, they're called, all around the city. You can find them on the website, geocaching.com, or find them on your smartphone, and whoever finds all fifteen of them, the first fifty people get a farmer's market tote bag, a hundred percent organic cotton from, made in the USA.
Thank you, Susan.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Susan.
And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob, and I was just gonna add Susan's report that I know the one-fifty committee, which I'm on with former Mayor Mike Rumel and a number of other individuals, we're also embarking on planting at least a hundred and fifty trees for the hundred-and-fiftieth celebration, and I know we have a lot of individuals from the public who have requested an ability to sign up for that, and I believe, Bob, is that available on the one-fifty website if you're interested in doing that?
I believe it is.
I think that's how we can, you can get ahold of us, but we've had quite a good response so far, and we are still looking for donations from the public to help underwrite it as well, so I'll put that plug in there. But thank you, Susan, for your report. Our next item on the agenda this evening is council committee reports, first being Finance Committee, Alderman Grumhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening, and we have another, a number of items that we discussed that need to be taken care of this evening. First, looking for a motion for final approval of a consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule for the City of Lake Forest. A first reading on this was approved at the April fourth city council meeting, it was also discussed in detail at the budget meeting on March twenty-first. This is recommended to increase water rates to four ninety-two per thousand gallons and six seventy-five per thousand gallons for water customers outside of the city. The overall record, this recommendation is two-point-seven percent increase, which is lower than the five percent increase that was originally planned.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. The second ordinance this evening is a consideration of ordinance making a supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty-ten, and ending April thirtieth, twenty-eleven. Finance Director Kathy Reinerston walked us through this at the Finance Committee earlier this evening. If there are no additional questions, I'll take a motion to waive first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to make grand final approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. And then the third item, which we also discussed in detail with Fire Chief Jeff Howell earlier to, this evening, was a consideration of an ordinance approving an ambulance fee schedule for the City of Lake Forest. This will be a first reading, but essentially, we are looking to increase ambulance fees up to the average of other communities plus a hundred dollars. If there are no questions, I will take a motion to grant first reading on this as well.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And that will do it for the finance agenda this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Grumhouse, and we thank you for your excellent job with the Finance Committee over the last five years. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
But we know where to find you. So, if we have those questions, I'm sure we know where to get you, hold your phone number, so.
All right.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is, where am I at? The Housing Trust, Alderman Morse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we are coming before City Council with a recommendation from the Housing Trust Board, as well as a preliminary presentation regarding the joint development of some single-family affordable homes in town that we have been under discussion with Council for quite some time. And in your packets, there is a memo of recommendation from the Housing Trust, there is a, there is a proposal from the Community Partners for Affordable Housing. There is also a series of draft documents that would be part and parcel of any ultimate transaction. Those documents, I might just say, have not yet been under full review by the city attorney, and so the purpose of today's meeting would be to provide you an overview, to get your input and your questions that we have, and make sure that we can incorporate your comments and considerations, and a final recommendation then that will come back at our next meeting at the City Council. If I can, just for a moment, give a brief overview, this is a, as I indicated, the Housing Trust Board has since directed by City Council last year to look at a series of affordable housing initiatives. This is one of those initiatives, which was to look at buying homes that may be in disrepair in our community, rehabilitating those homes, and then providing them for ownership on a long-term basis to affordable families. And this is a program that has been done in numerous communities very successfully, and we began discussions with Community Partners for Affordable Housing, which is a non-for-profit based in Highland Park. Rob Anthony, who is the executive director, is here tonight, to the extent that you have questions for him directly. But they have completed over thirty or thirty-five, I think I'm correct, Rob, single-family homes under this program. And what it is, is in fact using a variety of funding, and what we're, why it's coming before you today is we're hoping to use some of the funding from the Housing Trust. The monies that are in the Lake Forest Housing Trust are monies that are there, as the council may recall, from developments that occurred within the city. That money's in that account, and it is to be used only for affordable housing purposes under our inclusionary housing ordinance. And this is to use some of those funds. The council retains approval over every individual project that the Housing Trust would do, I think as we've talked about numerous times. But this is really a pilot program that comes to you after a fairly significant discussion over a long course of time with the Community Partners for Affordable Housing. I think, as council recalls, we wanted to make sure also that the new Housing Trust, fully constituted with all the new membership, was part and parcel of this dialogue, so we, we actually waited for some of the details till that committee was formed, and I've had a couple of meetings on this topic with them as well. And they are providing, by the way, a unanimous recommendation to City Council on this program. This is a program that will be targeted to the priority groups within the inclusionary housing ordinance, our ordinance, our targets, and those are, I'll just repeat them again for you, but they are senior Lake Forest residents, our priorities, non-senior residents, and employees of local institutions. So those would be, and in any case, if any of those types of priorities would have to meet any income requirements that we've talked about historically, we can certainly talk about those again if you have questions. This, the one thing I think that we felt important was the track record that Rob and his non-for-profit has established for doing these kinds of developments, for coming up with the documentation, which has been proven through thirty or thirty-five transactions. It's in a draft form, we'll want to make sure that it's right for Lake Forest, that Vic can get his hands on it, and make sure that if there's specific provisions that we uniquely need in our community, that we have that. But those documents are meant to be, they're documents that are meant to ensure that the, that the housing that we invest in remains affordable, even through subsequent ownership. It ensures that the incentives are lined up with the people that are in the house to make sure that they maintain and invest in those homes. And it, and it has provisions that, should the city want to take back those homes for whatever reason, that we would have a first right of refusal to do that. So, those are the types of provisions, or maybe other things that you raised. One of the reasons that we turned to Rob and his group is not only because of the track record, but we, when we began our affordable housing efforts, we did a, we did that with a number of other communities in the area. And one of the things, including Highland Park, most notably, who had the most experience with affordable housing projects, but we also wanted to leverage the expertise of other staff so that we did not have to invest in new staff that would have to be trained to do these kinds of projects. So, one of the reasons that we're turning to Rob and his organization is really to leverage that experience that we really don't have internally in-house, and you'll see that that's part of the proposal as well. So, it, the other, I guess the last thing that I might say is that I think when I heard a lot of the comments originally from City Council, we, we said that we would, this was a great time to take advantage of the market in terms of actually houses that had depressed market values. It was a very good time to maybe deal with some of these rather dilapidated, dilapidated properties that we have in our town, and it was a time where we could do a pilot and really kind of put our foot in the water here, and, and see if we can come up with some real win-win, shining examples of a great project. I would fully expect that we'd want to create some community events, like Habitat for Humanity type event around this to really showcase the investment that the city is making, as well as the leveraging of other funds that we're gonna get as part of this to do this exciting project. So, I hope that wasn't too long an introduction, but with that, I will, yeah, turn it over to the council for your thoughts and questions and concerns.
Just, just to clarify, no city funds are being used for this? All the funds are coming from the Housing Trust, which can only be used for affordable housing?
Yes, that is.
And, and the city will not end up owning any property?
No, the, the ownership will be in the hands of the, I mean, Rob can explain the details, so, if you want to hear the details of how it goes, but in terms of ownership, Rob, if you could just show us.
Good evening. So, the, the ownership of the actual home will go to the homebuyer, and then the nonprofit entity retains ownership of the underlying lands in perpetuity on behalf of the community?
So, you use it bound, please?
Exactly.
And that's for the control purposes that we, I'm sure you understand.
Very nuts and bolts question, and it's sovereign has an overview, for the actual rehab of the houses, is it gonna be professionals, is it gonna be volunteer, how is that gonna be?
Well, one of the, in the agreement, you'll see that Rob and his organization will serve as the project managers, and they will contract out work in a normal bid process with qualified contractors. I think addition to that, we would hope to be able to find a way to create some community involvement around that kind of activity, and that's done often on these projects, and it could be as, as little as demolition, or as much as painting, or whatever the case might be. But that would be done under Rob's supervision as the project manager and with a professional contractor. Yes.
Rob, how do you get paid? You know, what, what's the formula? Is it a percentage of the house? Is it a standard fee? Is it a yearly fee? What's the?
The purchase price for the home, or?
Well, no, the purchase price for the home be negotiated with the bank or whatever you're buying it from.
Right.
Your organization, how does your organization?
Sure. We, we're funded through a variety of private donations, grants, foundations, Lake County money, City of Highland Park Housing Trust fund dollars, some business grants.
But for Lake Forest to be in that, then, are we, is it gonna come out of our Housing Trust funds, a, a fee to pay you, and what, what would that be, or is there a percentage or?
Correct, right, so there's, there's a.
There's a fee in the budget, preliminary budget in the document, twenty-five thousand dollars.
It was just for the people that are watching at home, 'cause I'm sure that's a question.
Correct, so there is a, a fee of twenty-five thousand as an operating grants for the program.
To join in?
Correct.
And that's a yearly, or?
No, that's just a one-time fee for the two pilot programs that we are proposing.
So, we're part of the program?
Correct.
I had a couple of questions. First of all, I'd like to say, as somebody who has outspoken against the last proposal that came up here, I think this is a wonderful plan, and I, I just think it's a, I mean, the whole thing read well, it was just a, it looked really nice, and I'm in support of it, so I don't want to, I don't want my questions to be read wrong. And I, I promised that I would make that clear with these, these aren't reservations, these are questions to Alderman Widman, who is a proponent of this.
Sure.
I had a, the first question I had was, can you give an example of a formula price as mentioned in the proposal?
Sure, so there's, there's a resale formula that dictates how much the home can be resold for whenever that homebuyer decides to sell, and it's, it's a market appraisal-based resale formula. So, there's an appraisal that's done when the homebuyer purchases the property, there's another appraisal done whenever they decide to sell, which, which identifies the amount of total appreciation on that property, and then that's run through a resale formula that essentially compresses any kind of gain or loss. So, the homebuyer's not going to get a large amount of appreciation, but they do get a share of appreciation, so they have an opportunity to build some wealth, but it's capped so that it stays affordable to the next buyer. So, once one of the properties are acquired and rehabbed, it'll always stay affordable for future buyers.
Fantastic. Second question, where will the hundred and thirty thousand in grant comes, grant funds come from, and are they associated with Lake Forest?
Uh, there are funds.
I think you partially answered that already, but.
Sure, there, there are funds that were secured through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and they can be used in Lake County.
Okay. And I guess the next question I have is not one that I want resolved, but it will be asked. Will the neighbors to these sites be chosen, be made aware of the plans, and how will the, how will their opinions be dealt with?
Sure, so when we acquire a property, I personally go to the neighbors and introduce myself and, and introduce them to the organization, what we're about, what we do. You know, typically, what we try to do is acquire properties that are in pretty serious disrepair, so usually, the neighbors are, are happy that we're coming in and fixing up a blighted property. So, we also try to get them involved in some of the volunteer events to come in and, and do painting and demolition and those kinds of things, and they certainly were, were very accessible if they have any questions or concerns at any time through the rehab process or afterwards.
Great. During the applicant screening process, the, these are all things that were kind of issues that, that were debated heavily, kind of in the last thing. The eligibility determination, the target population that you've identified, well, I think I agree a hundred percent with it, is slightly different than the one that, than the, than the group that we've identified in our ordinance. And I just want to know how that would be, how you see resolving those.
Sure, so if, if the pilot program.
They're close.
Yeah, if the pilot program moves forward, that we would ask the Housing Trust Board to set their preferences for who would be first priority to get the homes, and then we would accept applications and, and award the homes on a first come, first served basis based on the selection criteria that's identified by the Trust Board.
And the last question that I had, the debt service on the land purchase, which appears to be financed by a local bank.
Correct.
Two questions, how's the debt service covered? And have other banks, is there only one bank in the running, or how is, how does that work?
We, we currently have two lines of credit, one through Lake Forest Bank and Trust, and one through First Midwest Bank, that our organization uses to acquire and, and rehab properties. And they've both agreed to below-market rates, interest-only loans, and so those are the two lines that we've used to acquire and rehab properties, but we'd certainly be open to, you know, other lenders if they could meet the, the same kinds of rates that those two are providing for us.
The first part of that question, how's the debt service, albeit below-market?
Sure.
Covered for the land purchase, which is not covered in the purchase price from the way I've read the proposal?
Right, so the, the debt service is paid through our project budget, that would be funded through the HUD funds and, and partially through the grant from the Housing Trust Fund.
Great, that was everything, thanks. Turned a lot up for me, thank you.
Other questions or thoughts?
I had a couple of quick questions. You mentioned, and Rob specifically said that the targets for these residences would be determined by the trust, and you mentioned senior Lake Forest residents, non-senior residents, and employees of Lake Forest companies. Does, does the trust determine a pecking order for that? Is it a, is that, are all three of those categories kind of thrown in together? That was my, my question.
We have. It hasn't been done at the trust.
Okay. And do you plan to do that?
I don't, I don't know about that. I mean, I don't know, Kathy, can you address that question? Because I don't.
We're going to be working with Rob throughout this process, but the priority might be set in part by the, the house that we acquired. It might be more or less appropriate for a senior. If it's appropriate for a senior, the trust might decide senior's priority. If it's not, we might go with a non-resident. So I, it will be consistent with the ordinance, consistent with the affordable housing plan, but we will work with Rob to try and match the right priority with the right house.
And, and I might just add to that. I mean, we're just, we're talking about a pilot program here. We're only going to have two houses. This is not about, you know, we're not going on a, a buying binge here. We're just buying two homes, and we're going to see how it goes.
So, and then the criteria is for a family of four, maximum income is sixty thousand dollars, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. And then somewhere in the documents, boy, there are a lot of them, there was a discussion about a mechanism to purchase the house back, should the, the residence or should the owner's income begin to exceed that? How does that, is that correct? Is that how it would work?
No, that's not correct. With, with for sale properties like this, the, the owner has to, or the buyer has to qualify at the time of purchase. But after that, their incomes can go up. It's different from a rental property where they have to recertify annually.
I thought there was something, Rob, in the document that talked about, part of your role was to recertify the owners.
No, we don't recertify or, or check their income. We are involved in the resale process when they decide to sell the home back. And then there, there are some compliance kinds of issues that we monitor on an ongoing basis. For example, they have, it has been owner-occupied homes, so we make sure that people are actually living there. You can't buy it and rent it out for profit. Those kinds of things, we maintain that kind of compliance, but we do not recertify income.
Okay. So, so conceivably, kind of in a, you know, quasi-perfect world, a, a family that would purchase this home at a reduced price could stay there infinitely, as long as they wanted to.
They, they could, correct.
And then, when, or if the time came, they wanted to sell, then, as was mentioned earlier, the, the appreciation piece would work through a formula to then result in a lower resale price.
Exactly right.
And who would control the resale of the home? You?
We would have the first right to buy the home back at the resale price. So we would buy it back, either buy it back and then sell it to another income-qualified buyer, or we would just facilitate the sale directly between someone who might be on the waiting li, list for Lake Forest and, and the seller.
Okay. And, and how many of these, Tom mentioned, thirty-something?
We, thirty-three homes we've, we've done now.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
If the owners stayed in?
We've had two resales. We've, we started in two thousand and three, or our first home was in two thousand and four. We've had two resales since that time.
And many young families, or?
Yeah, mostly young families who come in. There are a lot of families who may have been able to live in the community, but had the, a death of a wage earner, or had a divorce, or something like that. And they, they wanted to find a way to stay in the community, and this was an option for them. A lot of people who, who work in the community, people who may have grown up in the community and, and can't afford to come back.
Right. What about the senior population? Is that covered as well in, in your homes that you have?
We, we, in, our homes, all the, the homes that we have right now are in Highland Park. And Highland Park has some separate senior affordable housing programs. So a lot of the seniors are, are geared more towards the other senior-specific programs in Highland Park. But that being said, we, we do have some in, in our homes.
And Tim, just stating the obvious, for acquisition of any homes, it would have to be approved by council. So, it would come back before council for approval for purchase of any properties.
I think, Rob, we would go through a process with Rob, I believe.
Yeah, our, our intent is not to have it come back through city council. One, one primary reason is that we need to be able to move fairly quickly in order to acquire a property when a, a good deal is found. So we would certainly, though, work with the Housing Trust Fund. We have an acquisition committee that goes out and looks at different properties. One of the things that the acquisition committee does before they've been offered on a property is notify our full board that we'd like to make an offer on a property. The Housing Trust Fund, or Housing Trust Board has asked that we give them that same kind of notice before we've been offered on a property. And they can certainly keep others abreast of, of what we're hoping to acquire, if they feel that's appropriate.
Tom, I, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Yeah.
As a percentage of the available funds in a housing trust, what percentage would be used to do the first two residences? Can you give, is it twenty percent, thirty percent? Do you have a sense?
There's approximately nine hundred thousand dollars in the fund at this point in time. So this would be an investment of a hundred and fifty plus twenty-five, one seventy-five.
Okay. So, twenty percent or so?
Fifteen, or fifteen percent.
Okay.
Somewhere in that range.
And, and I'm, go ahead, Kathy.
You know, we, one of the metrics that we've used, I think, historically to look at these is cost per u, cost per unit.
That's what I was trying to get to, yeah.
And, you know, we're at roughly, our investment in this is something seventy-five plus twelve, eighty-seven-five per unit, which is, is a really good leverage for that, for that money to, to go to work and to actually provide a unit. We certainly couldn't build a unit for that kind of price, and we certainly couldn't buy a unit, a full unit, for that kind of price. Even if it was in a multifamily-type development, as, as council recalls previous proposals, it was a multimillion-dollar proposal for sixteen units. So, just, just on the leverage of the dollars, we were, we're pretty happy with that.
Just two other points that weren't mentioned yet. One, Community Development Department will work closely with Rob, both identify properties, to inspect them and to get permits. And then second, two members of the Housing Trust Board have been invited to join the nominating committee for community partners. So, perhaps two residents of Lake Forest will be asked to join the Board of Community Partners for Affordable Housing, to really make this a regional board.
Kathy, I'd, I'd one more question for you. Will, if appropriate, will any of these residences that require substantial exterior renovation go before BRB for approval?
If there was a, a project that would normally require a border commissioner view, a zoning variance, we would go through that same process.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So again, our next step is to turn Vic loose on the documents and make sure that we incorporate any issues that he sees, and any issues, I think you should feel free independently to, to reach out to Vic, or Bob, or Kathy. With any other concerns, we can make sure that gets fed into the review process of the documents. And we would bring back a formal set of documents for your approval at the next meeting.
That's good. Let's keep it moving.
So thank you very much for your inspiration. Much appreciated.
It's, it's a buyer's market, so let's keep it moving.
Right. That's why we're hoping to move on.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Our next item on the agenda is Laurel and Western Avenue Redevelopment Committee. Alderman Morris as well.
Probably tired of hearing from me. We are, I heard. As council will recall, several months ago, we came to council and requested a budget of ninety-five thousand dollars to remove some underground tanks and do some other remediation work at the site at Laurel and Western. We went, when we got into that removal, we discovered that, lo and behold, some of the tanks were not empty, and they were in fact full. And to remove them caused some additional materials to be dispersed around the site, so we had to do some additional work to get those full tanks out of the ground. The site is fine and good shape right now, based on the work we did, but it did run thirteen thousand dollars more, and we're coming back to approval for that additional cost. There wasn't a lot of choice about that when gasoline is spilling over while you're doing the work.
Were you able to resell the gas? Easy to.
So it's simply, we're asking, if we can, just ask for a ratification of a cost overage in the amount of thirteen thousand, three sixty-five.
Is, is this it? Or is this, are we still doing cleanup?
Uh, this is it for the scope that we contracted for.
About a motion to approve that?
I think it'd be good to have, since dollars, I think it'd be good if we could have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
In a second. Thank you all in favor.
It's probably a roll call.
Need a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Shonhader?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer? Seventy-eight, no nays, motion carries.
Can I ask one? So is the next step to do additional testing? Or?
No, we've, we've done some additional testing. We're still doing some additional research. And we'll, I, I, we guess it'll probably be a couple months before we know the outcome of that.
So you're going to keep, keep me happy and, and?
We're going.
Have me retired before you have to.
Until you're gone.
This is, this is not going to come up at the next meeting.
Okay.
Because we don't know the answers yet. So we're gonna, we're gonna keep working on it. So that's the end of my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Our next item on the agenda is Legal Committee. Alderman Palmer?
No report.
Next item is Public Works Committee. Alderman Luby?
Public Works, the first thing I'd like to give a quick report on, we had a meeting the, just this evening before this meeting, and covers all these heavy detail things. But I'd like to just bring the council up to date on the special meeting that we had concerning the South Beach Access Road. The meeting was very productive, with a lot of good ideas expressed around the table. And in the end, we felt that we all came to a compromised conclusion. And the members that were there were Tom Swarthout, John Centel, Cliff Miller, Bill Weaver from ACOM, the engineering firm, myself, Dan Reeves, and Chuck Sabaka from the consulting firm on the ravines. The first one is, we want to revise option two to move the existing road west as needed to stabilize the bluff. We want to limit the encroachment as little as possible onto the ravine side. We want to minimize the impact to the dry offshoot ravine by lowering the profile of the road as needed, not to ten feet as we originally saw in the plans. And we want to get it, just take it down enough to make sure that the bluff and ravine are stabilized. We're going to avoid filling in any of the section of that offshoot ravine if required. We may have to put in some steel piling to a very small section, but we want to keep any soil or dirt out of there. We plan to save as many good-conditioned trees as possible, again, by moving the road slightly to the west and not over as far as we originally thought. We also are looking at some of the trees that are in declining condition of improving that area. We want to remove invasive species and thin out small diameter trees and shrubs to improve the sightlines, being that we're not going to take that major curve out of the road. And we also want to allow more sunlight in there so that the ravine can have some better vegetation on the lower level. We're going to replant the distributed area with tree species best suitable for the bluff and the ravine. We want it to be a long-term, permanent solution. We want to be on schedule for this fall, and we want to make sure that it's cost-effective for the citizens of Lake Forest as well. So, we're working on that. Again, I felt it was a very good meeting. It's not a perfect world when we do this. Everybody, it's hard when you've got a lot of engineers in the room to get everybody to agree on it. But I thought that everybody came out feeling that we were coming up with a better plan. So, we have the proposed alternate that they are working on, and hopefully, we'll get that underway.
I'd like to comment on that real quickly. I'd just like to commend Ramish for juggling all these prior, all these priorities, all these interests, all these concerns with, with the good work that he came to the topic with. So I just wanted to say, thanks. It's an enviable position to be in, and you're doing a great job.
Only comment, Ramish, could you supply, just, you don't have it here, and I'm not asking you to do it. Could you supply the cuts and fills for that? I mean, I got your, your top ball and your, your elevations, but do you have any?
I don't think we have all those done yet.
I understand that, but at some point in time, we will.
Yeah. As part of the plan after that meeting is, we are going to have some kind of a cross-section, Mayor, so we will get those before, so you will see those cross-sections on how the bluff side and the ravine side looks with the new approach.
Just, but just put in the template, the cubic yards, cuts and fills. That's real easy for me to figure out.
Sure, yeah. Because we're not lowering the profile as much, you know, the, the idea was to stabilize the bluff as much as we can, and then try to limit the amount of disturbance with ravines. So, so that's how it should be, and ACOM, we were able to come up with this compromise so that, yeah, we can get you those numbers. Once we, we don't want to throw in some number based on a conceptual drawing, but we want to get the engineers working on it, so that once we get that, we can get you there.
Thank you.
Okay. The first one now that we're looking for is an award of the Lake Forest share of the annual street resurfacing program. That was presented at the Finance Committee meeting. The little bidder in the program was Peter Baker and son. We're looking at adding on to that oak knoll for a section that is considerably deteriorated since last year. And are there any questions further from what we discussed earlier?
Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, I'm going to ask Ramish to clarify something that came up earlier in the meeting that I think was confusing for the city council members about why there was a difference in price. So Ramish, can you talk about that for a moment?
Yeah. This was specific to Alderman Novit, where, you know, he was asking about those oak knoll drive on the, the unit price is the same unit price for all the three communities. So the unit price doesn't change for Highland Park, or Lincolnshire, or Lake Forest. So the unit price stays the same, it's just the quantities vary between the communities. So, so the, the, the way the base bids are, these are based on unit price, so it's the same sixty-four, twenty-five for all the three communities for that surface. But we may have quantities which are different specs for different, different municipalities. They're paying their own price for those. So, the unit price for the common quantities are all the same for all the three communities. So just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Any, any further questions on that? Are we looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Or we, that's a, that's a roll call. Yeah. Money.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Shonhader?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Seventy-eight, no nays, motion carries.
The next one is the award of purchase for a new core aerator for the park section. Again, the amount of that requested is twenty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. And that has been in the budget. Any questions on that?
I know we talked about it at the Finance Committee.
We talked about that earlier.
Can I combine, and, you know, these are very standard.
We'd be happy to do that.
That we've discussed, we've reviewed them at our capital discussion.
We have the.
This is equipment, we have low bids here in front of us. Can I make a motion that we combine items?
Sure.
Two, three, four, and five, it looks like?
We have the.
And six.
Exactly. The award, I'll just put them together, okay?
Okay.
Vic, are you okay with that?
There's a motion to, to go to two through six, and then we'll require a second roll call.
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Alderman Grumhaus?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer? Seventy-eight, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie, and thank you, Alderman Luby.
Made it quick.
You got through it.
Thank you, Alderman Marsh.
We have?
That's correct.
Our next item on the agenda is the Senior Resource Commission, Alderman Novit.
And, again, we had a successful, great meeting on April eleventh, and Marla, of course, capably handled it, but the concerns, there was some discussion regarding the affordable housing and progress on that, and those questions have been answered in front of council today. Budget, again, is seemingly under control for Senior Resource, but there's concern on funding coming in from neighboring communities and future, and that'll be a subject of future discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Novit, and speaking of seniors, my understanding is someone has a birthday coming up Thursday, and you're thirty-nine again, is what I understand, so, happy birthday to you.
No, thank you very much, and I'm a little beyond thirty-nine, but trying anyway.
Joining the senior center?
Did you get your ARP card though? That's what I wanted to know.
As a full member.
Full member.
Did you get your ARP card?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Waiting for my birthday.
I'll tell you a quick story, when I first got married, we moved into a condominium that was ninety-plus percent seniors, and when I was twenty-four, I had my ARP card already, so, I'd been saving money for a long time.
They've been coming to my house for a long time, and I am in complete and total denial.
Moving on, Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee, we have no new reports, the next item being comments by council members, anything new? No? Hearing none, we'll move on to opportunity for public to address the city council on non-adjourned items? Yes, sir, you want to come on up and please state your name for the council and for the viewing audience?
My name is Walt Nielsen, five-four-six Timber Lane, been a Lake Forest resident for just over twenty-four years. Comments on the proposal from the Housing Trust Fund. I'd like, first of all, to find out whether or not the documents that the city attorney is gonna be reviewing are gonna be made available for public review. Okay, in a timely fashion?
As timely as the city council members receive it, yes, once it becomes a public document, we'll be happy to share it with you and any other members.
Okay, I thought it was, they'd already received it in their packets.
Oh, are you referring to the sample from Highland Park?
I'm referring to the full set of, of contracts with the Highland Park subsidiary, and also the?
No, those are gonna be on?
Transaction documents in terms of doing one of the, one of these single-family projects.
Yeah, what's in their packet is a sample from the city of Highland Park, the city attorney will then be preparing documents for the city of Lake Forest to be on the next city council meeting of May second. So you can have the Highland Park sample documents that the council had in their packet this evening, and actually, they're in the packet, so it's a public document, and then approximately Thursday before May second, whatever date that is, then the draft that is prepared by the city attorney then will be available for public inspection.
Well, not to belabor it, but I suspect the documentation, if they've done thirty deals, is pretty much in place, and it's almost at this stage of what lawyers inelegantly can refer to as cookbooks, and it's that cookbook which I would expect the city attorney to be availing himself of, that I would like to see available for public review, that is, the tran, the full transaction documents.
We'll give you a copy of everything we have, as they have right there, you can see a copy.
Thank you very much. Comment on the utilization of that these are senior projects, at the Housing Trust Board meeting last week, it was pointed out very clearly by a lady who's there, I believe, from the Senior Resources Commission, or Committee, that since these projects carry with them a very clear and complete maintenance requirement, they're not senior, senior units. We also heard the representative from Highland Park say that they have two programs, so what this program is, is a program for families, in effect, not for seniors, but what we're gonna hear, of course, is the classic bait and switch, that this is for grandpa puttering in the garden, that's nonsense, it's not. Also like to point out, since perhaps there's a larger audience that watches the city council than watched the Plan Commission last week, that the Plan Commission considered changes to the inclusionary zoning ordinance, and then voted five to one against recommending those changes which were put forward by the same Housing Trust Fund Board to set the, essentially set a framework for scattered sites, single-family, affordable units in Lake Forest. And finally, I'd like to say, about eight or nine years ago, we were embroiled in the questions of whether or not Lake Forest would go home rule, and now, we are so bereft of our capabilities that we have to outsource this issue to a subsidiary of Highland Park, that's pretty damn sad.
Yeah, I, I thank you for your comments, but I think one, one just follow-up is we're not, we're doing a, we're looking at a pilot program, we'll come back to the city council, the council would have to approve it, and the Plan Commission vote may be a separate matter as far as the funding of that, but two, the, in order to do the pilot program, I believe the thought behind it, and Alderman Marsh can, can opine here if he feels otherwise, but I think the thought was, why recreate something if it's already out there, and for two units to do as a pilot program, it made sense to look in that opportunity, and I think that, that has some merit and some, obviously, some reason behind it to do that kind of a thing, so I think there's, you know, let's not get too far ahead of ourselves here as to far as what we're trying to accomplish, we're trying to look at two units that we all said makes sense to do in the community if those kind of housing are available, and they can be fixed up and put back to use and put back into the tax rolls as well, so, let's look at it that way, but I do appreciate your comments, appreciate your, your opportunity to come here this evening. Any other comments by the public this evening? Now we'll move on to the consent agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda this evening, one is a consideration of an ordinance ratifying a previously approved ordinance to correct an inadvertent omission, that's a mouthful in its own, the first reading and, if desired by the city council, final approval?
I'll just have.
I just finished, this is presented by Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development.
Just a consent agenda, thank you. It's just a consent agenda. You don't need to present. I guess you can. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the item on the consent agenda, it is a ratification ordinance, the council, a number of months ago, approved a special use permit ordinance for Elway Farm, during that discussion, you modified one sentence of one condition, and as we went to get the ordinance signed, in error, we had the, the non-modified language changed, the non-modified language in the ordinance that was signed. So this is a ratification ordinance, simply to allow us to have the correct ordinance signed.
Like to motion?
I can review those conditions if you want.
Do you need a motion to waive first reading?
Yeah, the spreadners here, I mean?
Like to make that motion to waive first reading?
Just wanted to come back to the council, the fact that it had been already signed and circulated, we wanted to make sure the public record was clear as to what is, which is the correct?
Motion to waive first reading.
Second.
I have a roll call, please.
This would be for the entire consent agenda, the first reading waiver as well as the approval are part of that.
In addition for the?
Do we?
The minutes.
And the minutes, correct.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Alderman Grumhaus?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer? Seventy-eight, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie, our next item on the agenda is ordinances, we have a consideration of a report and recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals to grant the variance from the side yard setback requirements at three-one-nine Woodland Road, first reading and, if desired by the city council, final approval, presented by Assistant, oh, it looks like we got the, we don't have the Assistant, we have the Chief.
We have the Chief.
Kathy Cerniak.
Is it the train schedule again?
Actually, it's the class schedule.
Oh, okay.
She's in the last few weeks of her graduate program, so. This is a request for a variance from side yard setbacks for property located on the south side of Woodland Road, just east of McKinley. This comes to you with unanimous recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And actually, the area of the variance is so small, it's very difficult to see, this is a property that originally was owned R-one, the house was built consistent with the R-one zoning, city initiated a zone change many years ago, creating a non-conformity, this portion of the house is six feet from the property line, the R-two zoning district requires twelve feet, a very small mudroom is being tucked in here, behind the garage, it is pulled back eight feet, eight feet from the property line, so it is further from the property line than the existing line of the garage. Part of an open porch was used as a footprint for this mudroom to keep the encroachment as small as possible. This comes to you, as I said, with unanimous recommendation, there were no neighborhood comments in opposition to this.
Motion?
And if you choose to do so, be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval.
Motion to waive first reading?
Second.
We have a voice vote on that, so all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion to grant final, sorry.
Go ahead.
Motion to grant final approval.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhaus?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer? Seventy-eight, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie, our next item on the agenda this evening is new business, we have one item, award of a contract for conservation work on Beryl Memorial Gateway at Lake Forest Cemetery, presented by Ken Leone, Superintendent of Public Works, we thought he retired, and he's back already.
He's back already.
That was quick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council, few more days. It's been fun, so I can't give up, right? The gateway at the cemetery entrance was constructed in nineteen-nineteen, it's a memorial to John Beryl, by his parents, Grease and Finley Beryl, young Mr. Beryl was a drowning victim in a young adulthood, Chicago architect James Roy Allen designed the limestone structure in the Gothic Revival style, at the top of the arch, you can see the young oak tree, not seen too well in this picture, but there is a young oak tree that appears to have been cut off, possibly symbolizing the young man's death. The gates were done by blacksmith Samuel Yellen of Philadelphia, he was a preeminent metal craftsman in the early part of the last century, and one of the interesting features of the gate is, I always like to show people this, I'm sorry. The knocker on the gate is Saint Peter, of course.
Wow, cool.
In two thousand and two, we did conservation work on this structure, at that point, the conservator removed incorrect Portland-based cement mortar, and we had salts that accumulated in the limestone due to de-icing of the roadway over many, many years, so salt and moisture was in the, in the stone, in the soft limestone, so, at that point, the stone was clean, the mortar was, the improper mortar was removed, and was replaced with a soft lime paste-based mortar, the correct material for this usage, the material that would have been used in nineteen-nineteen originally, and the lime paste-based mortar is very soft, it pops out when moisture comes through, so the idea is, if there is salt and moisture in the stone, rather than break the stone, why not just pop the mortar out, and the mortar is a maintenance item, it can be replaced periodically, so this is an, an ongoing issue to, to be done over a period of time on this structure to get rid of the salts inside of it. The other part of the project in two thousand and two was the restoration of the gate, the iron gate was rusty, needed to be sandblasted, repaired, and repainted, so at this point, the same situation has occurred after nine years, and we expected this, the conservator did the work, told us that there would be a repeat every nine, ten, twelve years on this for a period of time until the stone is stabilized, so at this point, we need to re-point, we need to remove the mortar that's popping out, and we need to work on the, on the gate one more time, and clean it up, repaint it, and since?
Are we gonna, are we gonna not maybe salt quite so much over there?
We are trying hard to not salt so heavily there.
That would be maybe a good idea.
Definitely, absolutely. Since this is such a historic gate and such an important part of the entrance to our cemetery, we treat it as a, a piece that needs preservation rather than a simple brick and mortar kind of place which anybody can work on, so we go to very highly specialized firms to do the work, we received three bids from three companies whose names you've probably heard, the recommended action is to go to the low bidder, Conservation of Sculpture and Object Studio, they did the work in two thousand and two, they did the restoration of the Howard Van Doren Shaw Fountain in Market Square during the two, Market Square two thousand project, they have done work for the Chicago Park District, Buckingham Fountain, and the Fountain of Time, and elsewhere across the country and across the world. The staff had a great working relationship with this firm in two thousand through two thousand and two on the various city projects, and we certainly highly recommend them, the funding is included in FY twelve cemetery budget, the total cost for Conservation Sculpture and Object Studio would be eighty-five thousand, four hundred dollars, and this contract was approved by the Cemetery Commission at their last meeting on April sixth, so I ask for your approval as well.
Just one quick question on the gate, you're gonna repaint that again?
Yes.
Is there a way of, like, powder coating it or doing something more modern that would be in industrial strength for a longer period of time?
Yes, powder coating is possible, but to do it, it has to be done indoors in a studio, and this gate weighs tons.
Oh.
We decided with the advice of some of the conservators that if we take it off, have it powder coated, we may never get it to hang properly again, so we're very careful.
It's a good reason to keep it there.
We'll do it inside.
I'll make the motion for the repairs.
I've got a couple, okay.
Second.
Sorry, you guys are so quick here, it just came to mind after six years, or five years on HPC, and we awarded this conservation, I'm sorry, Historic Preservation Award, and it is a built structure, is there any involvement with HPC on this topic?
This is, Kathy, maybe you can answer this, it's purely maintenance work, we're just re-pointing and painting the gate, we're not making any kind of a change to it, any modification whatsoever.
So I guess the questions that would be automatically asked, are these techniques consistent with the cemetery interior standards and?
A number of years ago, the, the gate, though, the work that was done at that time did go before the Historic Preservation Commission, everything that's being done now was contemplated at that time as a way to ensure preservation, so I believe this has been vetted and is appropriate to move forward in this fashion.
Okay.
Thanks.
We have a second?
We have a motion and second.
Moved and seconded.
We have a second, we have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhaus?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer? Seventy-eight, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie, our next item under new business is a request for city manager to enter into a cellular services contract for Sprint and Xtel, presented by Karina Walters, Assistant City Manager, we did talk about this at the Finance Committee, but Karina, if you want to add anything for?
No, no, we did talk about it during the Finance Committee, and I would just ask, if appropriate, and should the city council desire to authorize the city manager to enter into the contract contingent upon final approval from the city attorney?
So moved.
Second.
That's a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhaus?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Luby?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Seventy-eight, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie, any other additional items for council discussion this evening?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.